Okay, welcome Woodbury to your village board meeting on February 9th, 2023. Before I ask you to stand for the pledge, tonight our moment of silence will be in honor of the 226 federal, state, tribal, and local law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty in 2022. Well, everyone, please rise to the pledge allegiance and all the silence for those officers. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everyone. All right, so let me begin by introducing your village board day, starting at the end with trustee Graziano. Next to him is trustee Victorelli. Next to him is trustee Siriella. On special assignment, not here tonight, but on special assignment for the village is deputy mayor Tara Burek, so she is missed. Joining us on the day is our council, Kelly Norton, and to my right is village clerk Poppen, and I am the mayor of the village of Woodbury, Mr. Jack Amaza. So, starting right off the bat, we're going to start with the more touring waiver request for 16 Country Hollow. Public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on a request for relief from Local Law 5 of 2022, continuing the more touring on issuance of certain permits, certificates of occupancy, and approvals of the property located at 16 Country Hollow. Public notice was printed in the Times-Cell Record on February 2nd, 2023, and no written comments were received. Is the applicant present? I don't think so.
I didn't hear from him last week, but he's on the table.
So, this is pretty cut and dry. The applicant's word is coming from Woodbury Heights Estates in reference to an email from H to M. I don't know if you have any confirmation on that with them?
Yes, the proof is the N.
Okay. So, at this time, I'll ask anyone from the public if they wish to speak on this public hearing for 16 Country Hollow, starting virtually. And cheer in the room. Okay? Can I have motion and second to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now can I have a motion and second to approve the request for relief from Local Law 5 of 2022 for the property located at 16 Country Hollow?
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Okay. Introducing the Local Law 2 of 2023 entitled Tax Cap Override. A public hearing is being held to entertain public comments on introductory Local Law 2 of 2023 entitled Tax Cap Override to override the tax levy limit for fiscal year 2023, 2024, established in General Ministerial Law Section 3 and C. Public notice was printed in the Times-Cell Record on February 2nd, 2023, and once again, no written comments were received. Standard operating procedure, we do this every year, pass the local law and then rescind it if needed. So, so at this time, I want to go out to the public if anyone from the public wishes to speak on Local Law 2 of 2023. Once, twice. All right. Can I please have motion and second then to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to go through that again. There you go. All right, can I please have a motion and second to adopt Local Law 1? And this is where the confusion comes in. Of 2023 entitled Taxation, and to authorize the village clerk to copy the Local Law in the minutes of this meeting.
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, village clerk Poppen, will you please conduct the roll call?
I serve one day. Um, trustee Graziano.
Aye.
Trustee Dorelli.
Aye.
Trustee Siriella. Right. Trustee Berg is absent, and there is Jack Amaza.
Aye. There you go. The first one's in the books.
I'm saying absent, no, I didn't get a change. Oh, sorry.
Or you're abstaining. Okay, now it's our favorite part of the program, public comment on agenda items only. This is the time we should speak on it. Since tonight we will not be voting on the events venue law, this is, and it's really just for discussion, it's not a public hearing, so if you are interested in speaking on that local law, public comment on agenda items only is where you speak on it, and there's Mr. Poppen. Are you here for the application to 16 Country Hollow? Congratulations.
You should leave.
You're approved. I gotta ask if you bring any patients over. Now, it's all done, a little bit to go.
Thank you.
Shouldn't you want to say, I'm pretty entertaining?
Well, I was talking about staying.
Have a good night. Joyce, the floor is yours.
I regret that I do not have a red jacket, but you have the red blue. Again, we wish to thank the board for working with Rushmore to make this event venue local law happen, and we do have a few comments, though, we would like to bring to your attention. We've actually brought them to your attention, but I think it's necessary to reiterate. First, the, for lack of a better term, I call the void on transfer provision. It creates some issues for the applicant, it creates issues for the viability of the use of the property for the long term. We understand why the board has that. What we would ask is that you provide a waiver provision, because you can, I could go through a list of possibilities. The Cessna Morris decides to join the business, take it over eventually, needs to get financing, goes to the bank, he said, you need to be on the deed. Is that a transfer? We don't know. By trying to answer those questions, we think it could be possible that you simply say the village will consider making that provision when the circumstances are appropriate to do so, when the use basically continues without change, without significant departure from what's been going on there, and that gives you a lot of flexibility and control over whether or not you do it. And what I think is also important is suggest a clear path for someone who does want to come in and work with that business to keep it going as it is. You're saying you can convince us you deserve a waiver, or you can take the process to the planning board, go through review, and spend, you know, significant time and expense, basically to do the same exact thing that the property owner currently has protocol. I think from that standpoint, it makes sense for you, it makes sense for the village, and we'd like to ask that you consider that. The second issue we have with the law is there are provisions in there which were taken more or less from the fire code, and they're important provisions, and what I really want to emphasize, and I've talked to Seth about this, he wants to, he's, he's, he knows what the planning board is recommending and why, it's to keep people safe, that's his concern too. These are his clients, these are people in some cases he knows, and he knows the family, he is concerned about safety as much as anyone else in the room or on TV. I noticed the chairman is on the phone, and I, I listened to what he said, and I completely agree. People who go underneath the tent should be safe, we understand that. So, the issue, though, is if you are putting provisions from a fire code, which is enforced by the pro enforcement officer, into the zoning law, the question then becomes, is it a zoning requirement or is it a fire code requirement? It's very clear what it is, it's a fire code requirement, chapter 31. But what does it become once they get into the zoning law, and who's responsible for enforcement, and what happens when the code changes? When we change your zoning every three years to maintain consistency with the code? So that's an important concern. What we would suggest is, we think it's very common to say, if you're applying for this permit, you must comply with chapter 31, you must have the tents inspected, you must do all the things that chapter 31 says you must do, and you must not do the things that chapter 31 says you must not do. And it's, it's easy to put, it's easier to put that in the statement that can then be addressed in the course of project review, we can put in a set of statements and say you can do this, you can do that. Where it becomes even more complicated is, is the planning board then going to require review of each of those events? Because, and Seth can speak to this if he wishes, but my understanding is many, not all of the wedding events are very particular to the wedding and the goat and the host and the, it's arranged almost on a wedding-by-wedding basis. So you have 20 events during the year, the building inspector can come in and inspect, but if it's a planning board process, what is the plan? Does the planning board require 20 plans, does it require you to come back each year with the seating arrangements for all the weddings? It is a question that we think makes it inefficient, especially given that the building inspector then has to come anyway. He confirmed that it does, we know the code requires this. And we are not arguing with the compliance. Building code and fire code are important, and they do need to be complied, and they provide for all that. So having those specific requirements in the semi-legal edition is at least to be done, maybe confusing, the language doesn't track. And I looked at the code last night, and I sent it to Kelly, there's a couple instances where it parts, and then with the five sections, and two have differences. That's a concern, because what do you tell the tent guy if he comes out and puts it up? You follow the normal chapter 31 requirements, which provide work specifically for aisles and seating and setbacks for generators and a host of other things, or do you follow what's in the zoning law? Do you follow both? Because that's another issue that comes up, is if you're not following one of those, you're violating. And if you are in violation, I think your proposed law says you can't have a permit. So it's problematic from all those viewpoints. Again, we're not trying to avoid responsibility, we're not trying to get around something, we're trying to make it a very linear process to follow those laws that's already established in the fire code and building code, because that is to be, that ultimately becomes Mr. Penelope's responsibility to go out there and affirm to comply with the requirements. And we're going to be working with him on that. Kelly asked him to come back when we set up the meeting, Seth has already done that, Seth was independent of that, Seth set the meeting with some of the emergency services people, who are willing to have the access. So we're very mindful of that, who will work with it, but what we would ask is that you look at these code issues and see if you can come up with a solution to make sure they're not extorting the planning board process, we're not trying to cut the planning board out, you should be aware of how it's going to go, but when you start putting very specific things in there from the fire code, it just creates problems. So we would ask that you consider that. And the final issue that we spoke about briefly at the last meeting was whether or not there's a way to work non-pro, non-profit organizations. Seth has worked with Children's Hospital in Rochester and other places to fund branches and things like that, and he's posted things for the, with the Women of Woodbury organization, community organizations. So those are not for profit, not for consideration. Kelly's been trying to work something in the code to cover that. I did look at what she had done in the last draft for birthdays, weddings, and special occasions, and the question is, is a fund or is there a special occasion? So we'd like to see if we can get some clarity on that. If it's a determination the building inspector made, Willie making, it would be helpful to him, I suppose, to have that clarity as well. So, I mean, perhaps during this meeting, have a discussion about it and to come to a common understanding, that would be appreciated. I have other comments, but relatively minor. Kelly, as happy as ever, can I just swirl? If you have no objection, we will work with that. Do you have a question?
Yeah, he sent in the two letters to the board, which the board previously considered, and we had a discussion about it in attorney time.
Okay. George, just do me a favor, because I want to move this along, my things work, and I love seeing your handsome face at meetings, I really do, but I just need to get information from you, like not the day of the meeting. It has to be, I, I don't know where, you know, where the disconnect is with it, I just want to get the stuff prior to the meetings, like, and I'm talking about the week prior, giving my attorney the chance to mull it over, and then the board a chance to mull it over. Because we had emails flying this afternoon about, like late this afternoon about it, and I was all planning on moving this thing along, moving it done, and being over with, but we're now another two weeks out, so just please.
Just by way of explanation, I looked at the code, I looked at the fire code, I looked at the building code, I looked at your own building code, your own fire code, I'm attempting to make those things appear in my mind so I can explain them to you. So basically, that's taken me over a fair amount of time in the last, since the 31st, when it was closely to the downside. You have a lot of comments in there, and some of them are certainly good comments, and we want to make sure we focus on the issues, not just the general point.
Yeah, I mean, you can see by-
So I completely understand.
Yeah, you can see by the, we have four local laws in front of us tonight, so getting this out of the way, you know, scratch off my list, and she'll tell you how much I love my list.
Until you'd like to get stuff off quickly.
Yes, there you go.
We will certainly do our best to do that.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public wishing to speak, who are, is here present this evening? On agenda items, thank you. Anyone in the public who is joining us virtually, wish to speak on agenda items only? All right. Moving on to administrative business, can I please have a motion and second to accept receipt of the minutes of the meeting held on January 26th, 2023?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, that's confusing. CJ with the motion, we'll give it to Sue Siriella with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Village clerk Poppen, will you please read extract 15?
Contains vouchers 221527 through 221623, boarding voucher 221559, which is check number 22115 until $608,000, $723.
There you go. Ooh, neat. Can I please have a motion and second to approve extract 15 as right?
Motion.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
I can give you the bullet in there, come on. Oh, well, I thought you were. That's why I have a brief. Do you, do I, I don't have to, then, don't worry about it.
You're only the village that's at best, but I can, you're the county, I can.
Yeah. So here we are discussing, just seeing how this conversation going on here is budget modifications on the town side, they re-go a bunch of modifications.
At every meeting.
At every meeting. And we don't, we do it twice a year. So I have no problem presenting, reading it as presented, or-
They're on the website.
They're on the website, we seen. So, I will save the village clerk's voice, and we can all leave here sooner, because that's going to take 20 minutes with all those modifications. So, can I please have a motion and second to approve the modifications to the 2023 budget as presented on the website? Motion. Thank you.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, there you go. Explain then.
Just save this.
There you go. Now we move to discussion, and will not be a decision, on event venues. Local Law 10 of 2022. So, attorney Norton has amended it, we're going to be going back and amending it again after comments were received from the planning board at the direction of the village board. So at this time, has anyone on the board have any questions for council on Local Law?
No, you're amending it just for the fire provisions and what the planning board to get to?
Yes, so I did have conversations with the building inspector, there are going to be some amendments made to address some of the concerns regarding the fire code. I'm going to have to take another look at that to make sure he's comfortable, since he's still going to have some force with some of the changes.
All right, then we're finally pens down?
Pens down, although I did notice that some of the bullets came out with letter, and then the subsection is also a letter, so I'm going to fix that, because it should be letter through that number and address that. You, you won't care about that part organizationally.
I think legal, that's the minimalist.
Okay, yeah.
That's, all right, we got to go pens down to get this thing through.
Yeah. And what about the provisions that Mr. Lithgow just introduced tonight, wave provisions, fire, and whatnot properly? Do we need to discuss that now, or do we?
Well, I did get some responses from Mr. Lithgow in response to responses that I have provided to Mr. Lithgow. We did have some back and forth, I would like to take another look at those, and then I can so advise the board in an attorney-client meeting regarding those, and get your feedback there, see if you have any questions based on those.
Okay. And just for the record, I would like to thank Planning Board Chairman Chris Gerber, as well as the entire planning board for their insightful analysis and contributions to this local law. If you had an opportunity to watch the planning board meeting, you will see they spent a great amount of time just to get now that discussion, so I want to thank you. Anything else from the board on event venue? Oh, yes, that's right. Okay. Anything else on the board before I move on? Okay. Welcome back after that short commercial break.
A lot of time to say, I've never been to one.
There you go. We read, by the way, we read all the budget modifications during the break, so, anyway, so moving right along, can I please have a motion and second to declare this a negative declaration of the seaker? And I'm talking about the event venue as well.
Motion.
All right, second. Vic? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right. Adams Street, Asquitha Building, so can I please have a motion and second to authorize me, the mayor, to sign a revised agreement with Lysica McCormick Van Voorhees, Architectural Services relating to the renovations of the building department's future location at 19 Adams Street? Their revised agreement is to amend Phase 2 construction documents and Phase 3 construction administration, and represents an increase of $8,000. Total cost now is 54 grand. So motion and second, please? Motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's not a big-
No, no.
He's just distracted now, I hope. All right. All right, you scheduled, we have an additional item, which is the rescheduling of public hearing for introductory Local Law 1 of 2023, which was short-term rentals. So can I please have motion and second to reschedule the public hearing on introductory Local Law 1 of 2023 entitled Short-Term Rents, to be held on March 23rd, 2023 at 7:30 PM? Well, I'm rescheduling this so the board knows, just to allow more time for the planning board, because I don't think it's been in front of them yet, and it will give us more time to review and comment on it. Motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
New business, introductory Local Law 3 of 2023, Volunteer Firefighter Ambulance Property Tax Exemption. So in December this year, our illustrious governor signed new legislation in relation to property tax exemptions for volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. This legislation requires all taxing jurisdictions that offer property tax exemptions to these individuals to transition to newly authorized statewide exemption by December 2025, at which time existing laws relating to this type of exemption will automatically repeal. Statewide exemption allows for the option to provide property tax exemptions of up to 10% to volunteer firefighters and ambulance workers. This will be valid on property used exclusively for residential purposes. To be eligible, the volunteers must live in Woodbury and meet a minimum requirement between two and five years, an amount the board must determine. Additionally, the taxing authority can offer a lifetime exemption to volunteers who use one use of service if they maintain their primary residence in the county they serve. Another permission is allowed for unmarried surviving spouses and eligible volunteers to retain that exemption. So attorney Norton has provided a draft of this local law, we have a word just into the side following, and I'm going to basically throw it out there just for time's sake. So as for the percentage of the exemption, I am proposing 10%. For the minimum year, the years for the minimum qualifications, I am proposing two years, and I am proposing yes on both the unmarried surviving spouse option and the lifetime exemption option. So does the board agree with that?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, Vic? Okay, CJ?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
What were the two exemptions, I'm sorry?
There were, it's the lifetime exemption option, and then it's unmarried surviving spouse option. Yes. There you go. All right, please have motion and second to introduce introductory Local Law 3 of 2023 entitled Taxation to repeal chapter 277, Article 8, and replace it with a new chapter 277, Article, entitled Volunteer Firefighters and Ambulance Workers pursuant to section 466-A of the real property tax law. And now, the same, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, just for the record, the local law, and we went through all that trouble with last year with special election, now we can come and vote. So everything we did was great, we got an, we got an A+ and a star, but it's now, have to wait, progress, progress, there you go. All right, now, can I please have a motion and second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 PM on February 23rd, 18 public comments on introductory Local Law 3.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Vic is back. Small nap there. Some ancient one. Okay, introductory Local Law 4 of 2023, Entity Disclosure. So last year, when we adopted Local Law 9 of 2022, this section of the existing law was inadvertently removed. So here we are, back again to introduce, to sit to the village code once again. So can I please, and it's been named happily, Building Construction, whatever it is. Ah, there you go, okay. So can I please have motion and second to introduce introductory Local Law 4 of 2023 entitled Building Construction to implement an entity disclosure law?
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I now have a motion and second to schedule a public hearing to be held at 7:30 on March 9th, 2023, 2023, 18 public comments on introductory Local Law 4 of 2023 entitled Building Construction.
Motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And this is all going to get confusing, because all these local laws-
They're going to change.
The numbers are just going to be completely out of whack, so we have to ban them to all, one, two, dah dah dah.
We're tracking.
Yep.
There's chart.
There's chart, and there's geometry and trigonometry used to keep track of this. Yes, the chart, there it is.
There's the chart.
The official chart. Okay. Notice of Lead Agency Intent, Town of Woodbury, Ridge Road Bridge. Notification has been received from the Woodbury Town Board where there intends to be a lead agency for this project, Ridge Road's ridge replacement. Can I please have a motion and second to consent that the Town Board, the Town of Woodbury, serves lead agency in this application, and request that the village continue to be known- in this application, and request that the village continue to be notified with filings and hearings in this matter?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now, can I please have motion in second to rescind the village of Woodbury's lead agency status for the Ridge Road Ridge Replacement?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Authorized purchasing revitalization grant expenditure. So the village of Woodbury Revitalization Committee has put forward a recommendation to purchase enhancements for Smithville Road, their own circle, to be paid or with a hundred thousand dollar grant given to the village by state Senator Scoobis. They are recommending the purchase of thirty solar powered streetlight poles, streetlights like poles, to be installed along Smithville Road and Lower Valley Avenue at a cost of twenty thousand five hundred forty-nine dollars and forty cents. Goose neck, wait, well, twenty goose neck wall mounted solar lights to be installed along the MTA retaining wall on the central at a cost of five thousand nine hundred ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents, and thirty two-arm brackets for each land post at a cost of two thousand three hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty cents, plus shipping. We can't forget the shipping. The procurement policy was issued to, to, for all these purchases. And before I answer a vote, I just want to thank village clerk Poppen for all the work putting the this, getting the pricing, getting the bids, putting everything together. You did a wonderful job. Yeah. Ninety-nine points, three percent maybe, okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yep, too finachianal about that, by the way. So can I please have motion in second to authorize the village clerk and the village street superintendent to order the items listed funds to be expended through the hundred thousand dollar revitalization grant given to the village of Woodbury by Senator James Scoobis?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Regular business is done. All right, we move on to public comment. So we will start virtually. Anyone virtually from the public wishing to speak? The lovely Shannon Jattamaza? No?
Kathy.
There, no. All right, uh, anyone here that is
Kathy.
Oh, Kathy Schneid, go ahead, Kathy. I didn't see you so tight.
How are you? Anybody hear me okay?
Yes, too loud, by the way, but that's okay.
Oh, I'll be quiet. Um, so I just wanted to check in. I know this is kind of random. It's not so much a village thing, but it is a Woodbury thing. Um, I've recently heard random thoughts about the, started to make my rounds just to clarify some stuff for the public, um, just for those not in the know. So Central Valley Library, that branch uh, was a gift that was given to the library by the Ida Cornell family. Um, since then, there's been one owner, which is the library. The buildings, the property, um, all owned by the library, free and clear. But that gift, uh, came with one condition. The Cornell family said that the building must remain a library or it gets returned to the family. We lose ownership completely. So I just want to, for the record, uh, let everybody know that Woodbury Public Library, the Ida Cornell Central Valley Branch, will never be surrendered back to the Cornell family. It will remain a library for generations to come. It will never be closed. I just want to put that out for the record. Um, as always, I encourage anybody to get in contact with me, Facebook, private message, wherever you can find me. Uh, if you have a question, if I don't know the answer, I'll get it for you. If I can, I'll include backup documentation, um, with that answer. And I believe, I'm not sure, but I believe the historical society can also help with some information on that background, but, um, I haven't spoken to them personally because I did all my own research, but, um, that's it. The Central Valley branch will be here to stay for a very long time.
Kathy, thank you. Is that it?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, anyone else in the public or otherwise wish to speak that's here with us? Join us, gentlemen? Okay. Moving on to department comments, uh, starting with Mike Pinella.
Uh, good evening. Uh, I just want to say a big thank you for, to Bobby Blair for all the hard work that he's been doing since he came aboard, not just in the building that you're at now, but especially down at the Adams Street Building. His work is unbelievable, and I just want to say thank you very much. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Michael. And I just would like to echo those sentiments if, um, and actually, Rob Wyman, I want to thank you also for providing the additional labor to Bobby, because the progress they made, they have taken the side, the game plan is that the garage side is where the bulk of the work is, and Bobby is going to handle the office side, so he's already ripped up the entire floor, carpeting, uh, the ceiling tiles are all down, the progress that they made in two days was just phenomenal, so.
The money you saved.
And that's the biggest thing, especially for the village clerk treasurer, is the money saved. So, uh, I want to thank Bobby, I want to thank, uh, Rob Wyman for their assistance with that and getting that started, so we save us a boatload of time and a boatload of money. So, thank you, Michael. Is that it?
Uh, that is it, and also thank you, Rob, Rob Wyman, thank you.
All right, Mickey Phillips, tell me something good.
I got nothing for you tonight, sir.
That's great, okay. All right, Mickey, thank you. Rob Wyman?
I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
All right. And village clerk Poppen? Not negative, all right.
Go Eagles.
Go Eagles.
I have some Eagles.
There you go. Four comments. Jessica, you got anything?
No, thank you.
Sure. Four comments, starting at the end of the table, Mr. Graziano.
Yeah, go Chiefs, have a great evening.
All right, trustee Ferrell.
Hey, I want to talk about a couple of upcoming fundraisers. Uh, the first one, it's not too late, is the Parklands being held, hosted by the Woodbury Community Association. And I just want to say it's a great fundraiser. All the proceeds go to the American Heart Association. And last month, I kind of, or last meeting, I kind of, um, went a little conservative on what we donated to them, but I actually have the actual numbers. So thus far, the Woodbury Community Association has donated thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars to the American Heart Association. We have over seventy people going to Saturday night's event, and we're hoping to push that number over forty thousand. So it's not too late, get your tickets, uh, the flyers are around, or you can contact me and, um, look forward to seeing you on Saturday. The second fundraiser is one of the Knights of Columbus's building. It's their annual St. Patrick's Dinner, dinner dance being held at the gym in St. Patrick's. This is also a very good fundraiser. It's a good time out, you get to meet a lot of people. We have live music, we have Irish dancers there, and, uh, all the money raised for that is distributed back into, uh, the village, so it's, uh, it's a good fundraiser, it's a nice idea. And then lastly, the thing I want to talk about is the newsletter. It's still a work in progress, it's still kind of evolving, at least I'm buying. And if anybody has anything they would like to see put into that newsletter, just, you know, reach out, email to me, send it to me, contact me, and I'll try to get it in. Just keep in mind that every newsletter that goes out gets the blessing of the minute before I get the send button. And that's my comments for the night.
Thank you, Ben. Trustee Cerriello.
I would just like to talk about that. Uh, last week, the fire chief and the president of Woodbury EMS and I met with the Monroe Woodbury School District, and we were able to talk about recruitment opportunities for our high school students to start getting some more volunteers. Uh, it was a good meeting, and we are going to have both the fire department and EMS at the school going to their two uh, first aid CPR classes the week of March thirteenth. After that, they're going to be stationed outside of the large cafeteria in the hallway trying to speak to students. Uh, they'll have equipment there, so kind of like a touch, kind of like a touch things and see things and uh, and they are actually contacting the local department departments on that side to see if we can make it one big recruitment effort for the entire community. Uh, on top of that, they are having a health fair at the end of April, and they will include those services as well. Um, and also I'm talking with the school district about possibly increasing the curriculum at the school. Uh, I found some programs at some of the SUNY schools, um, and possibly the students could get college credit for it where it's a paramedic training, good for students that are looking for the pre-med fields, and also fire protection technology. So there's some opportunities out there. I spoke with the head of high school curriculum, and he's looking into some, uh, looking into that, and he will let us know where that goes.
Very good work, so. Thank you. And one more thing, Dylan, you mentioned this about things for newsletter?
Uh huh.
I think maybe we should look to put in like an employee spotlight, corner page. I mean, I love that idea, and, uh, we're gonna start with Rob Wyman first.
You know, you give everybody who the department heads are, you honor your long-term employees, and you kind of say what they do, and, you know, it kind of gives the public the faces behind what makes the village work. So I think that would be
And they should
It's a hard idea. Don't kill what's in front of us, says about it.
So every, you know, every month you do a different employee, and, you know, it kind of gives the faces behind how, how everything moves.
And this is why I keep CJ Graziano on this board. No, but it is a good idea. We did talk about something similar to that, but I don't know if we got into the employees as much. No. So.
We didn't get into it. About the employees, we don't know.
Exactly. We aren't worked.
It's very nice, CJ.
We've been more with the citizens than, than, well.
We have like
Before you say Desiree's better. Go ahead, you were gonna say something?
With Desiree's better, maybe we can put that in the, uh, in the, uh,
Well, if it's known, you people crazy, you get it.
That Mickey Phillips, what a great guy. It's my new favorite department head. All right, some I turn, all right. At our last, uh, at our last, uh, village board meeting, the board asked an extension of the moratorium. So it's been brought to my attention that posting of this resolution may not have given some residents time to comment. Please believe me when I say this was not done out of malice. Uh, my apologies if this caused any kind of inconvenience or you thought this was done deliberately. It was not. So I will run up a few things about the moratorium. For starters, it was renewed by a resolution because we passed a local law originally in July of twenty twenty-two. That local law allowed us to do one renewal, uh, which we just did at the last meeting, so to extend it. Now, if we have to extend it again, then we would have to go through the local law process also. So, uh, secondly, we were due to have an update on the wells for well, uh, on the wells eleven and twelve at our second meeting in January. That didn't happen. Hydro environmental solutions had to cancel. So at our next meeting, I will have either Bill Cannavon in or Sean Peterson arrange to them to give the community update on the wells and how they're going. There is good news with it, but as municipal government works, it's like a turtle with four broken legs. So Lord knows when we may hear some things, but they were submissions to all the appropriate government agencies, and now it's just a reading game. So, um, last or next thing, the wave of process. So we currently have four exemptions in place. Private wells, other municipal water systems like KJ or Harriman, mother doors, which was added with this last resolution and, or last approval of the resolution, and smaller additions of homes that don't exceed two hundred and twenty gallons per day. So moving forward, private wells and municipal waters will no longer have to go through the public hearing portion of the program. They will be put on the agenda, we will discuss it, and then approve it instantly. There'll be a literature of all these that are involved in that. Now, if the board wants to, we can add the, the other two, the mother doors and the the two twenty gallons per day to that same type of process. Where it just comes to us, there's no public hearing, it needs to be scheduled, and then we just approve it that day. So if you are okay with that, I can direct the attorney to exactly do that.
It's a kind of a double, it's sort of, I don't know, I don't want to take away the opportunity for the public to have an, instead of public process, but also it would be much more efficient to have it through the best, so, kind of torn, which really bothers this one, but I think because we have so many public comment opportunities in each meeting, uh, we could have it done anyway if they're on the agenda, so I'm willing to do on this one, I think, to get that first.
Vic, any, uh, any issues with that?
No, I'd like to try to put it on, and people can come up with that, and we can go back and forth. I mean, get it out there and get through it.
All right. Sue?
Agreed. There is the opportunity for the board, if you have an application that you have more concerns about, it would still provide the opportunity to schedule a public hearing if they want that. And obviously, you'd be getting all the documentation before you get a recommendation for it. Thank you, Ben.
Okay, and to, just to piggyback, which was my point four, about the mor, the moratorium process, every meeting you're allowed to speak twice, public comment on agenda items and public comments. So by all means, uh, if you wish to come to one of our meetings to speak on the moratorium, be more than welcome. We will take your concerns under consideration, potentially address them and whatnot, we'll be fine, so. That's all I have on the moratorium process, so. With no other business and no other comments heard, can I please have motion in second to adjourn the meeting?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, the next meeting of your village board will be February twenty-third. Valentine's Day is coming. Do something nice for the special person in your lives.